Good evening. I'd like to call to order Bloom Carroll Local School District Board of Education Meeting on Monday, June 10th, 2024. Mr. Bigum, roll call, please.
Mr. Abbott, present.
Mrs. Bender?
Present.
Mr. Bratton?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mrs. Sherman?
Number three, plus pleas, led by Mr. Thomas.
Quite pleased to be in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with thirteenth and just as for all.
Number four, approval of the agenda. We do have one change to make. Before we do that, did anybody have any questions in regards to the agenda or see anything without a close? All right, perfect. So on 9C, 17G.
Which is on page eleven? Page eleven?
Yep. We're going to need to change the group from D to E.
That's it, that's the only change I have.
It was not, no, 17G. It would be, yeah, so...
It's up at the top, G.
It's up at the top, G.
I think it's the S.
On the S, yeah. Change that to E. Everyone good? Any other questions? Perfect. May I please get a motion?
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Bratton, second by Mr. Abbott. Mr. Bigum?
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes from the following meeting. Did anybody see any changes that needed to be made on those minutes?
Um, I did not. I worked through them this morning. Didn't say anything.
Okay. Any others? All right. May I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second?
Motion made by Mrs. Bender, second by Mr. Abbott. Mr. Bigum?
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Number six, public participation. All right, we have got Mr. Food Services today?
Mrs. Enyard, thanks for being here.
Um, we have a wonderful food service staff that are very dedicated. Their jobs and their responsibilities are very serious about what they have to do. They pay attention to allergies and making sure that they serve what they're supposed to be serving, make sure everybody takes what they are supposed to be taking. Um, we have two staff members who are moving on to bigger and better things, so we have three positions to fill for next year. I have several applicants, um, who are setting up interviews for this week. Uh, we are currently at twenty-three percent free reduced. Um, our charges, well, that's due to everyone being free. Um, our, uh, our meals are, our counts are up right now due to everyone being free and then they, I think maybe got a taste of what we have and they actually like it now. Um, our kitchens serve two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-nine lunches and forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-fourteen breakfasts this past year. Um, current charges are at twenty-seven hundred. That's after a donation unfortunately of twenty-one eighteen. It's still twenty-seven hundred. Um, we had two health inspections this year. Neither one had any violations. Um, the high school is super excited. Uh, we're getting new fridge and freezer in the high school walk-ins. Uh, they're totally gutted right now. It looks pretty cool, but, um, we're really excited to finally get new stuff there because they've needed it for a really long time. Um, and we have our yearly staff training scheduled for August fifteenth for next year. Good.
So is it the same size freezer?
Yeah, it's just they gutted the whole thing and it's just a big open space right now.
Do you think you're having issues, um, hiring anybody before the school year?
Uh, no, no. This, this past one coming. What are you asking?
Are you gonna have any issues filling those positions for the school year?
I don't think so. I have several applicants.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure how interested they are once they, I don't know. We get subs in there. They come in and it's not what they thought it was, but we'll see how it goes, so.
Just want to real quick in front of the board, just stay there if you could, please. Um, I think I shared an email with you guys, but I just wanted to acknowledge the work that she does. It's a hard job and being a supervisor, coordinator, director, principal, teacher, any role in the district can be challenging, but certainly, um, you know, Marilyn and her staff, they do a very good job. And I received an email from a parent whose child has some food restrictions and, and Marilyn works with the family and several families to go out of her way. Uh, she will make individual trips. I know it doesn't seem very efficient, but, um, this particular student, if they, if there's something that we're serving that we're unable to provide, Marilyn will work with the family a week ahead of time and she'll run to the, you know, food service vendors and providers and go pick up extra, uh, you know, items that we can serve those students so they feel like they're part of all the other students and buying a lunch and sitting down with them. And I thought it was really nice that the mom reached out to me, the parent of the student reached out and just acknowledged the work that she does to accommodate them and, and other families too, but, um, just want to commend her for, uh, doing a good job for us, so I thought that was important to share.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
And a grant. You obtained a grant for the replacement of that, for a portion, yeah, part of the refrigerator or freezer is paid for by a grant, so it helped cut down on the costs that we have. I think the majority of it was covered by the grant, so it's nice. Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our second one is technology department updates. Mr. Thomas?
Good evening. So I sent you guys some, some stuff or asked Sean to send it. I just, I'm gonna just give you guys a high-level overview. So if you remember from last year, um, you approved a position for a third technician. So I want to kind of put it a little bit into perspective. So these metrics are from this year. So for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we handled nineteen-hundred-and-fifty-six tickets, almost two thousand tickets now. Doesn't include phone calls, doesn't include walk-ins, things like that. These are actually tickets through our ticketing system. So I broke it down by quarter. The first quarter was a little high with the average, um, response time being two-point-three-one days. That is partially due to not having that half-to-full-time person in the previous school year, so there was an abundance of tickets that kind of carried over. So if you look at the remaining three quarters, you can see that it, they drop each quarter. So that second quarter, we were at point-three-eight, three days with a point-eight-oh resolution, point-four-eight, um, and then point-four-nine, but the resolution in that fourth quarter dropped from point-five-three, five-seven in the third quarter to point-five-three in the fourth quarter. So comparatively to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year where we were only two techs plus myself, um, and that's not, that's not on there, um, Mr. Hon, we covered one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty tickets. Our average response time was one-point-two-nine days with an average resolution time of point-two-point-zero-one. You take those total numbers in the twenty-three, twenty-four with the nearly two thousand tickets, response time dropped to point-one, one-point-one-six and response time overall, one-point-three-three. So I think that that kind of shows that need to have that third body, um, in that department. So, um, I told you last year I wanted to do a four-hour response time. We've almost met it, um, with point-four-nine. We're at a half day, a little less. Um, hoping now that that third person is settled in and he's very comfortable in his position, we'll see those numbers drop. So we have a zero-ticket pool as of today. So, um, our ticket pool for the last month and a half of school would top at maybe five when we ended the day. They would be at zero the following day. So it kind of shows that that person was very well-needed, that these things, you know, we're able to cover these things where we need to needs the students, need to needs the staff. So as I said, those are just tickets that are put in our system. So middle school does a great job in putting tickets in for Chromebook repair. High school, they come to our office because that's where we're located. So there's no point in having someone put a ticket in on behalf of that student when they can come down to us. Okay? Um, so, you know, if we did that, those numbers would be slightly higher, um, though not much because we did a total of three-hundred-and-fifty Chromebook repairs, um, actual repairs, screens, keyboards, bezels, things like that. Of that three-hundred-and-fifty, only twenty-three were high school. The bulk of those were middle school. Okay? Of those twenty-three, nine were uninsured. That's the parents that didn't take the optional insurance. Um, three-hundred-and-twenty-seven middle school, uh, only thirty-three were non-insured. So kind of speaks to those parents. They're, they're getting in that habit of that twenty dollars a year is pretty important. When you look at a keyboard, it's seventy-five bucks, for example. So, and for twenty bucks, they get two repairs per year. So, um, all of our repairs are handled in-house. Uh, we rarely have to send anything out. Um, and as I said, that, those totals don't include our walk-ins, our phone calls, our spur-of-the-moment type emergencies that we have to handle. So that was really kind of what I wanted to point out this evening. So any questions for that?
So as far as the uninsured, um, as far as payment, is that, they normally pretty good?
Yeah, our payment surprisingly, um, so here's, so our process is a Chromebook comes in and it's non-insured. Our techs write it up. They take pictures of the damage. They provide that report with those pictures to me. I have a form letter that goes out to the parents along with an invoice and we add it on to their fees. That gets mailed home to the parent. Um, that way they see what the damage was. They have the visuals. They also see the technician and their professional opinion, what, what it caused the damage and what that right of was. We, our collection, I don't have the percentage right now, but I see, you know, a couple thousand bucks coming in every month from those parents that are paying for those repairs. So, um, you know, I, I, parents really haven't pushed back on any of this, um, especially when you've got the information right there for them to see, so.
It's pretty impressive as far as your response time.
Thank you.
I was impressed last year, so.
Yeah, it's really, I, I can't take credit for it. I have a remarkable team. Um, from my assistant to my technicians, they, they really are the glue that holds everything together. They anticipate what the, what our needs in the district are and they make it happen. So, you know, I have to really give a shout out to those guys, so.
Mark and his staff are just so conscientious. I mean, I almost, I almost laugh at the response time. You know, he wants it to be four hours and, and that's great, and, and that's a great goal and I'm gonna support that, but, um, you know, I sometimes think that response time that's a little bit longer than that is still okay. If you worked in some other business, sometimes it can take a day or two or three and we don't want it to stretch out to that. And, and it just speaks a lot to Mark and all the technicians and, and you know, I, I hear compliments all the time, receive emails all the time about his staff and just how, how well the technicians listen to, to the staff member or to the parent or to the student about what is it they're having trouble with. And then they, they really make sure that their customers get what they need within our parameters, so.
We, we have, um, we have morning meetings with all my staff. Even though we're in a relatively small office, it's very important that we all come together as a group every morning and we discuss, you know, what each person is doing because I've moved to the point now of assigning different tasks to each of my techs and they take ownership in that. As an example, we're rolling out new laptops. My assistant, Tyler, that's his job. He is managing that from start to finish. We talk about the process of that a long way. So, um, Phil, my other, one of my technicians is responsible for all of our iPads in the district. So by doing this, they have ownership in this. I'm overseeing everything, but they're really the ones that are making everything happen, so.
Hope you get to relax for a couple weeks.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Now we go on to treasurer's recommendation reports. Mr. Bigum?
Okay, item A is to approve the May financial statements for a total expense of eleven million, eight-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and two cents, including a little over one, nine-point-one million in consortium expenses. Not a whole lot to report in May. If you're looking at the, um, spending plan comparison, we did update our revenue estimates to match the forecast. So if you, if you're looking at it saying, hey, I thought we were way ahead of the, well, we, we are when you compare it to October. I just want to make sure there was just one set of numbers out there and we're all working from the same baseline, which is the May forecast right now. Expenditure estimates, quite frankly, are almost the same from October, uh, so we kept those the same with no update. With one, one month left in the fiscal year, our purchase services, there's just one little timing issue. I look for everything to really come in close to that May forecast. And again, uh, three weeks left in the fiscal year, we're in good shape to end the year. Uh, want a really positive note with a nice carryover. So, um, any questions on the May financial statements or the checks written during the month?
No, I just want to say, I mean, great work. I mean, I know budget's a big deal, right? At the end of the day, I think, you know, Mr. Hon both have managed it very well, so good news going into last three weeks of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Any questions? May I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Abbott, second by Mr. Bratton. Mr. Bigum?
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Item B is approve the following final appropriations for fiscal twenty-four as follows. As listed, general fund, um, through, uh, school safety grants, the total of funds, a little over a hundred-and-fifty-four million. Uh, this just really puts the finishing touches on our preparations for this fiscal year. There's really hardly any change from when you approved the originals in September. By law, no fund can have expenditures that exceed this. There's a little bit of cushion in some of the funds, but, uh, really just again, putting the finishing touches on our appropriations, which the board is legally required to do as of June thirtieth.
Any questions? May I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Bender, second by Mr. Abbott. Mr. Bigum?
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And then to piggyback a segue from that is item C approved the first temporary appropriations for fiscal twenty-five as follows. These are just a set of numbers to get us started Ju- July first because again, by law, we are not allowed to make expenditures, payroll and budgetary expenses without a set of appropriations in place. So this just allows us to, uh, business as usual on July first. Um, throughout July and August, my team will be inputting all the new salary amounts, all the new insurance amounts, everything from the wish list, and then either in August or September, I will bring the formal budget or the first permanent appropriations for the board to approve. So again, don't, don't put too much stock in these numbers. These are just temporary. Just allows us to make expenditures beginning July first in fiscal twenty-five.
Pretty self-explanatory. Does anyone have any questions? May I get a motion, please?
So move.
So I'll second this. Motion made by Mr. Bratton, second by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Bigum?
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Item D is approve the following fund-to-fund transfers. Uh, the first two are pretty routine. General fund to our energy conservation debt, semi-annual payment to cover that. A second one is a culmination of all the tournaments that we've hosted and are able to, um, charge kind of a fee that, that allows it to go back into our athletics fund, uh, which will, um, go to all student athletes, not just in, in certain sports, of ninety, nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars and nine and a cent. The last one, I anticipated this coming. It was hard to predict, um, and even the amount, it's, it's kind of hard to, to kind of get a good gauge on exactly what the athletic fund needs. Uh, I am recommending that the general fund transfer, uh, to the athletics, fifty thousand dollars. Um, currently anywhere from about twenty-six to forty thousand dollars in the black in athletics and it really, it's pretty much statewide. It's just the, the cost of officials and umpires has risen exponentially and, and rightfully so. They've, they've got a very tough job, obviously, as all of you know and, uh, but without raising admissions and, and things like that, we're tied to the mid-state league. Uh, it's been hard to cover all of our expenses and to, obviously with new leadership in the athletic department, I think we're having more continuity as we go into next year and have a little bit better idea of how much the officials and the umpires are gonna cost. I'm hoping this is the last year that, uh, that we're gonna need to do that, but, um, we are legally required to, to get that fund into the black and it's, it's currently not, so this is my recommendation. It was on the forecast, uh, both in October and in Au- or I'm sorry, in May, so that's something we kind of foresaw.
Any questions? May I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Abbott, second by Mrs. Bender. Mr. Bigum?
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
And finally, we're thankful and recognize the following donations to the Bloom Carroll Local School District from the Barrel Bar and Burgers here in Carroll. Uh, Mrs. Enyard had said that they had donated two-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, uh, to cover a large portion of the outstanding lunch, uh, charges that are through K through twelve. But thank you to them.
Yes, thank you to them as well. Any questions? May I get a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Bratton, second by Mr. Abbott. Mr. Bigum?
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
And Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bigum. All right, moving on to number eight, whole business. Uh, we need to approve the following policies. Uh, number one and two is presented below. Um, any questions? All right. May I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Bender, second by Mr. Abbott. Mr. Bigum?
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to superintendent's recommendations and reports. Mr. Hon?
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, just wanted to point out, we do have a guest with us this evening or a couple guests, uh, one, one that you may know and, uh, I'll go ahead and introduce our other guest. Uh, Mrs. Grody is with us this evening. We always appreciate Mrs. Grody and all the work she does with our concessions and our music boosters and the athletic boosters. So since she's here, we'll thank her. But the other person I wanted to introduce is Andy Schmitz. Uh, Andy is on the agenda tonight to be hired as a high school social studies teacher and a varsity boys' basketball coach. Andy is a Bloom Carroll grad and, uh, he has some experience locally here in the county and in Pickaway County being a head coach. And, um, I, I really think, we're really excited. I think our students are excited. Um, not only do we get, my understanding, an excellent teacher. Uh, he was, he's been teaching at Ewing, uh, middle school for several years teaching social studies, uh, but we also, we get a really good, high-character person and a good leader, uh, for our student athletes and, uh, for, for our students in the classroom. So, um, hoping, uh, tonight you will approve my recommendation to bring Andy on board as a social studies teacher and as our, uh, and as our varsity boys' basketball coach. But I just wanted you to be able to put a face with his name and he's already at work and, uh, the bad news I had to tell him is we're closing our gym down starting today because they're sanding the floor in there and redoing that. So, uh, he will find a hoop at, at the park if he needs to or wherever to work the kids out. So I'm sure it'll be a busy summer for you and a big transition, but welcome aboard. Just wanted to point him out. Okay? And also, uh, other items. Wanted to, uh, really recognize, uh, the, the class of two thousand and twenty-four and all the students that just graduated and the work of the high school staff this past year. Uh, one hundred percent of the students that started their senior year this, this past year, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as a senior, uh, graduated on time in May and that doesn't always happen. Now, that doesn't mean we have a one-hundred percent graduation rate because the cohort of students is over four years. Okay? But rarely do you even have students that, you know, a hundred-and-fifty, a hundred-and-seventy students that start the year as seniors graduate and meet every credit requirement by May for graduation. Sometimes they have to do some credit recovery, take a math class, take an English class during the summer, and then sometimes a few students might get their diploma maybe in August or even later. But it's, uh, you know, a great thing to see that one-hundred percent of our students that started their senior year graduated on time. So, uh, you know, congratulations to the high school staff and to those, that senior class. The Ohio State test data, as you know, we test in grades three through eight every spring along with every other school in the state of Ohio, public school. And, um, we, uh, you know, mainly that's reading and math, uh, achievement tests, and then you have science and social studies in fifth and eighth grade. Uh, you also have high school, of course, exams in six different subject areas, uh, not by grade but by subject or by course. And right now, uh, it's preliminary data. We don't have all the data back from, um, uh, for example, the third grade, uh, ELA and third grade math results are not back because those are, we administer those through paper pencil. Uh, we should be getting those in the middle of the summer here. Um, but right now, our proficiency rates look very good. Um, all, uh, pretty much above the state average. I think there's one area that I can explain with eighth grade math. We, we push a large number of students in eighth grade math that technically don't qualify for acceleration in algebra. We work with their families. We work with our teachers. We work with their achievement data and we, and, and their performance in the classroom, their grade averages. And we, we target, you know, another forty kids or so, uh, and push them into algebra so they take higher level math hopefully, if they're successful in high school. And by doing that, we're moving our best eighth grade math students, probably sixty to seventy, into Algebra I. So some of those scores are not reported on eighth grade math. They're reported on the Algebra I score with the high school. So sometimes you might look at eighth grade math when the data comes out and be like, I wonder why that's a little low. Well, it's because we're taking forty kids that are typically very successful that don't technically, um, automatically get put into algebra and we're working with their families to say, we think your child can do it and here's the benefit of it. So sometimes that impacts eighth grade math. But what I, my point is, um, our, our scores, our proficiency scores are up in almost every single area, uh, from last year. So, um, you know, great job for our staff and for our students there. So we'll continue to monitor and track all that data and we'll have probably a firm, for a firm look at it in, in August when we come back. Okay? Uh, congratulations to our teachers of the year and our support staff members of the year. Uh, Jessica Lombardo was the elementary school, um, K2 primary, um, teacher of the year and she was selected as our district teacher of the year. Uh, Ms. Mathias at the elementary school for the three-to-five grade band. Uh, Ms. Smith at the, uh, middle school was teacher of the year. Noah Kelly at the high school was teacher of the year and Terry Cackley was support staff, the Lynda King Memorial Support Staff Employee of the Year. So congratulations to all of them. We recognized them at our end of year breakfast along with our, um, anniversary year recipients, um, last week or a week and a half ago. Um, in terms of hiring, HR, um, still very busy. Last week was crazy busy. I got a lot of recommendations on the agenda tonight, but our classified positions, we still need some lunch mon- some lunch monitors. We still need some cooks. We need a bus driver. Um, we'll, you know, we'll continue to work on that over the next few weeks. Hopefully have those recommendations to wrap up at the July meeting. And then certified, uh, we're down to a part-time psych. Uh, there are eighty-one psych positions in the state of Ohio that are unfilled currently. Uh, there is just not a pathway or avenue for educators to become psychologists and Ohio needs to really revisit that. The internship to become a school psych involves, you know, hundreds and hundreds of hours. It's unbelievably complicated. You have to go through a university, do a school psych program, and, uh, there are just not a lot of people doing it. Uh, we are actually looking at a model that some districts have used. Um, we had, we had a school psych, a part-time school psych that was employed, going to be employed, um, through the ESC, but we are basically built for three days of services. So we, it's a purchase service on, in our budget items and, uh, we had somebody, but, uh, right now, school psychs are calling districts in positions that are open and basically saying, what are you guys willing to pay or what can you pay? And they're jumping around and naming their price and that's how valuable they are. Uh, we lost ours. We had, we had one coming from Pennsylvania. Family was moving to the area, but a neighboring district was able to offer a contract that was one month less and ten thousand dollars more. So, uh, we, we lost that person. We do not have a part-time school psych right now. I'm very worried about that. We have a full-time psych that we hire directly. Um, working with our special ed director, uh, Mr. Ward believes we can look at a model similar to, uh, some schools in central Ohio where we look at potentially, uh, contracting through the ESC since it's, um, a part-time position, uh, maybe looking at bringing in an IS, an intervention specialist that technically is allowed to, uh, administer assessments, uh, write five-oh-fours, um, attend out-of-district meetings as our district rep to help alleviate some of the pressure on our full-time school psych. So that is an option that we're really looking at right now and we may have to go that route. Uh, I don't think we can enter the school year without supporting our full-time school psych. I don't think we can enter the school year without supporting our full-time school psych. But again, 81 positions in Ohio that are open right now, that there just are no candidates for. So with capital improvement projects, as you can see, the patching repairs on the old primary Carroll Elementary is, has started. And the parking lots behind the middle school and behind the high school will be done here in the next, well, late June, early July. And the roof tear-off over at the high school will be going on, or has, I think, started today as well. We have a pre-construction meeting this morning that Dennis Thompson, our maintenance supervisor, attended, but everything's on track with that. And I think, I think for now, that's my update. Oh, enrollment, just wanted to let you know, it's early in terms of enrollment, but it looks like right now, don't pay attention to all this, this is just kind of how I keep track from our May, our May numbers. Throughout the summer, I track every in-and-out student, withdrawal, every new student. But we have 37 new students that have registered and nine withdrawals at this time. The one thing that's kind of helping us is the kindergarten and the first grade sections. Right now, I guess if you just look at the highlighted column, we're okay on the spreadsheet. We're about 120 kindergarten students, which would be really nice for class sizes. First grade's at about 150, and then we quickly jump up to 178, 168, 182, we get into the 190s, 180s, you know? So we're, we're pretty consistent, but right now with these numbers, if that kindergarten holds, you know, where it's at, we might have less students next year than what we had this year. So we'll just have to keep an eye on that, you know? Throughout August, we typically get a last-minute bunch of kindergarten registrations, maybe 15 or 20. So again, we'll keep an eye on enrollment throughout the summer, but I just wanted to give you an update that currently, we're up, you know, 37 new students, nine withdrawals. So that's kind of, kind of where we are right now, okay? Any questions about anything? All right. So let's move on to, let's move on to 9C. Number one, approve the following handbooks, which would be the elementary school, middle school, and high school. Number two, approve the middle school, grade seven and eight volleyball camp for July 29th through the 31st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the high school gym. Number three, approve the boys' basketball camp, July 8th through the 10th, 2024, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. for grades three to five, and 10:30 to 12:30 for grade six to eight in the high school gym. And yeah, we've got to wait a minute, sorry.
Any questions in regards to the handbooks or the camps? Hearing none, may I get a motion, please?
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Bratton, second by Mr. Abbott, Mr. Bigum.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, 9C. Number one, approve the employment of Christopher Hoffs as a middle school, high school math teacher on initial sequence, one-year limited contract with Step 10 with bachelor's degree and effective with the 24-25 school year, pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements, and that is to fill the resignation of Cory Heeter. Number two, approve the employment of Katrina Seitz as an elementary school intervention specialist on an initial sequence, one-year limited contract at Step 10 with a master's degree plus 30 semester hours and effective with the 24-25 school year, pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements to fill the resignation of Megan Clarity. Number three, approve the employment of Andrew Schmitz as a high school social studies teacher on an initial sequence, one-year limited contract at Step 10 with a master's degree plus 30 semester hours and effective with the 24-25 school year, pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements, and that is to fill the resignation of Megan Boitard. Number four, approve the employment of Jamie Limber as a second-grade teacher on a one-year limited contract at Step 1 with a bachelor's, effective for the 24-25 school year, pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements to fill the one-year leave of absence of Hannah Ortiz. Number five, approve the revised special education director's job description. Number six, approve the employment of Donald Ron as a substitute bus aide for the 23-24 school year and the 24-25 school year. Number seven, approve the following requests for pay scale advancement pursuant to receipt of official transcripts and effective with the September 6, 2024 pay for Leah Cheek from a master's to a master's plus 15. Number eight, approve the following home instructors at the tutor hourly rate for the 24-25 school year for Amber Harris, Holly Lovelace, and Anna Parker, each with 190 hours. Number nine, approve the following elementary school staff as after-school detention monitors for the 24-25 school year for Denise Bloom, Jennifer Bradley, Mark Casperson, and Cindy Smith. Number 10, approve the following middle school staff as Wednesday/Saturday school and detention monitors for the 24-25 school year as presented A through I. Number 11, approve the following staff for high school Wednesday/Saturday school and detention monitors for the 24-25 school year as presented A through J. Number 12, approve the following requests for FMLA leave of absence for up to 60 days for Angela De Felice, May 6, intermittent leave, and Cheryl Arjory, beginning August 21st, 2024. Number 13, approve the following academic supplemental contracts for the 24-25 school year as listed in the agenda, item A through T, T. Number 14, approve the following extended service days for the 24-25 school year as listed in the agenda, A through H. Number 15, approve the following AP instructors for the 24-25 school year as listed A through H. Number 16, approve the following college credit plus instructors for the 24-25 school year as listed A through E. And number 17, approve the following athletic department supplemental contracts for the 24-25 school year, pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements as listed A through H. Number 18, approve the following athletic department volunteers for the 24-25 school year, pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements for Alexis Lanier with the middle school girls' basketball program. Number 19, approve the list of school volunteers for the 24-25 school year found in your packet. Number 20, approve the employment of Megan Arada as a middle school teacher on an initial sequence, one-year limited contract at Step 0 with a bachelor's degree and effective with the 24-25 school year, pending timely completion of all pre-employment requirements to fill the vacancy created by middle school resignation. And then, yeah, we have to go back up to vote, back to page six to vote. Or seven. Seven.
Any questions in regards to employment and hiring activities? Hearing none, may I get a motion, please?
So move.
I'll second, I'll second this one. Motion made by Mrs. Bender, second by Mr. Johnson, Mr. Bigum.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
All right, and item number 21, approve 20 extended service days for Jamie Johnson, middle school guidance counselor for the 24-25 school year. That voting line is right above there.
Any questions? May I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Bratton, second, or motion made by Mr. Abbott, second by Mr. Bratton, Mr. Bigum.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstained.
All right, 9D, contracts and agreements. Page 12, number one, approve an extended school year service contract with Mindscape to provide 10 hours of summer instruction by an intervention specialist for six hours of speech therapy and six hours of occupational therapy. Number two, approve a contract with VIP rehabilitation services to provide services by a teacher for the visually impaired during the 24-25 school year. Number three, approve the college credit plus MOU with Hawkins College for the 24-25 school year. Number four, approve continuing with Board Doc Services for one year, effective July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. And number five, approve the headline Sportswear Rewards Program Agreement.
Any questions in regards to these contracts? May I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Abbott, second by Mrs. Bender, Mr. Bigum.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
All right, 9E. Number one, accept the resignation of Megan Clarity, elementary school intervention specialist, effective immediately. Number two, accept the resignation of Cory Heeter, high school math teacher, effective immediately. Number three, accept the resignation of Megan Boitard, high school social studies teacher, effective immediately. Number four, accept the resignation of Kerry Horn, high school cook, effective immediately. And number five, accept the resignation of April Steckman, middle school cook, effective immediately.
Any questions? May I get a motion, please?
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Bratton, second by Mr. Abbott, Mr. Bigum.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Abbott?
Yes.
Mrs. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn.
You're welcome.
Number 10, new business. There's nothing on the agenda this evening. We'll move to number 11, board reports and information, starting with facility management. As we can see from the outside of the racetrack on top of the elementary building over there, with the roped off there with the flags, that work will be conducted here in the near future as well as the parking lots. Any other updates?
Maybe I should probably tell you, Mr. Herjes and Mr. Thompson have been working with the youth football organization. They will be using the elementary school, it sounds like, behind the grass area behind the elementary school and out front between the detention pond and the front parking lot, I believe. They will be putting a small storage shed back behind the elementary school on the east side of the property between the landscape mounds so they can store some of their youth equipment. We have shared that we are not responsible for any theft or damage to the building or any of the items inside of it, but they would like to place that so they can store the equipment there so the youth organization can practice there. I believe they've been practicing for several years at the Fairfield Career Center, and due to some construction down there, they're not able to use that area. So they'll be out at the elementary school, but they want to place a small storage unit out there, so.
Thanks for the update. All right, moving on, personnel and labor, Mr. Abbott, Mr. Bratton.
Nothing further.
No updates.
OSBA, no real significant updates. Legislation, nothing really hot going on as far as that goes. Policy, Mrs. Bender?
There, we haven't received anything from OSBA. They've been running behind all year, about a month. We should have a new packet here. I think it's because of all the legal changes with House Bill 33 from last summer that they're still trying to work through the policy updates.
Thank you. Safety, health, and wellness, Mr. Bender, Mr. Abbott? Finance, Mr. Bratton?
No updates.
All right, perfect. Moving on to B, upcoming PTO booster board of education meetings. We've got tomorrow, the music boosters at 6:30 here, or at the high school media center, June 19th, June 19th. And July 4th, the offices will both be closed for federal holiday, as well as July 5th. Athletic boosters meeting on July 8th, 7 o'clock in the middle school cafeteria. And then on 7:15, we will have our Board of Education meeting here at the media center. All right. Moving on to number 12, adjourn from regular session and go into executive session to consider the appointment, appointment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official and master, and matters required to be kept confidential by federal or state statutes.
All right.
All right, congratulations.
I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity.
Welcome home.
Yeah, and excited to be back home, so. Let us know if you need anything.
Of course. You also, have a good evening.
Yeah, me too. Need a motion?
Yeah, I got it. Can I get a motion to move to executive session, please?
Second.
Motion by, Mr. Bratton, second by Mr. Abbott, Mr. Bigum.